The Situate School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there's disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. That said, I'll call the meeting to order, May 19, 2025, at 6:00 PM. Let us begin with public comments. So, anyone in person who would like to come up and give public comment, you can come right up to the microphone over here.
Hi, everyone. Our names are Juliette Finn, Sienna Petit, and Juliette Coleman. We are all currently sophomores at Situate High, and we've begun our civic action project.
Our civic action project is trying to bring driver's education back to Situate High School. So, we used to have a driver's ed program here, like after school for all of our students, and it was, like, taken away, but we think it'd be nice to bring it back. And, yeah, so usually, like, right now, to get your driver's lessons, it is a difficult process because a lot of programs, like, are far away, and, like, it is expensive, definitely for parents, especially if you have multiple children, it is a lot of money. And we did some research, and we think if we brought it here, it would be a few hundred dollars less, like, very worth it. And also, teachers would get an extra salary if they wanted to participate in teaching it, and I think that would be beneficial to our teachers as well.
We have already spoken with Ms. Kirk and Mr. Lynch to sort of, like, see what people would think about the program, and we do believe it's a good idea. There are just some things we need to work out, and we'd like to get some interest and see if it actually is a possibility in the future.
We have also spoken to people from other South Shore schools, such as Silver Lake and Norwell High School, and what we have found out so far is that how the process would go is there's a limited sign up for students who would like to participate in the courses, and if it was offered at Situate, it would create further social opportunities, financial opportunities, and it would be an overall more positive process for students, especially with accessibility.
Thank you so much.
Are you open to a few questions about your projects? Ms. Barkowski?
Yeah, I was...
So, thank you for coming and talking to us about this. I was wondering, do you have a sense of what the barriers were or why it was, like, things that we should be thinking about, like what challenges we faced if we wanted to bring it back?
So, in the past, the reason it shut down was because the teacher who did teach it, Mr. Crowley, had retired. The new teachers who would want to teach it...
I was one of the students.
He's his former student.
Oh, okay.
I got him as a teacher.
I had Mr. Crowley.
Don't do that.
That was a long time ago he retired.
It was a long time ago, yes.
Oh, yeah. But after he retired, the class was no longer offered, and we would have to, the teachers who would want to teach it, would have to re-go through the certification process to be able to teach those classes.
Okay.
And there would be a fee to get the certification, but in the end, it would be a self-paid program in the sense that students would have to pay. But we still have to work out the financial aspects, and we were trying to contact Dr. Rapp about that.
I'll start then.
I'll protect you first.
Sure, too. Yep? Yeah. Thank you.
Now, that was my question, too, was do we know when this stopped and why? But you kind of answered, but Mr. Crowley, I know I had him for driver's ed, so that was a long time ago. I mean, it must have been, what, 15 or 20 years ago you retired? Not more than that?
I'm afraid to say. I do remember, I do remember, I think I took his class, but I didn't do the actual driving hours with him. It was simply from our school, but probably also retired.
Maybe, maybe in a future meeting, we could see some numbers, Tom.
Yeah, work with them.
We could too, sure.
Just be kind of fun to see what it would take.
I think there would be a lot of interest in parents would have given.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If it's something right in town.
Um, yeah.
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 Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Good job, ladies.
Okay, any other public comments? Nobody online. Any person? Okay. We'll go on to our student report. Jane Ryan. Busy, busy.
Yes. Sorry, I'm not going to be meeting in a few weeks, but thank you for having me. I would like to vouch that that sounds like a great idea. I'm going to drive to random places for my driver's hour, so. So, to get started with our sports announcements, all of our spring sports teams have been continuing to impress. Boys lacrosse, girls lacrosse, boys track, girls track, boys tennis, girls tennis, and girls golf all have winning records, and tonight is the Will Robinson Memorial Game, where the girls will be playing the boys. JV and eighth, or seventh and eighth grades at 7:00 PM, and varsity and JV is at 8:00 PM. And as we go into the spring season, athletic senior nights are underway. And moving on to general announcements, congratulations to Kathleen McCarthy, the physical education teacher, who will be receiving the MIA Distinguished Women in Sports Award at Gillette Stadium on May 20. Furthermore, the Situate High School Source Shipyard received the national gold level operations at DECA national standards. And also, this week is senior, the start of Senior Spirit Week. Today was Superhero Day, as we count down to our last day, which is on Wednesday, May 28. Math and cast will take place tomorrow, May 20, and Wednesday, May 21. So, good luck to our sophomore students. Last week, our film as literature students, 85 of them, presented their final projects, which were short films they all made at the Real Harbor in Situate Harbor, or sorry, the Real Movie Theater in Situate Harbor. Admission and popcorn were free for anyone who attended. It was a great event, and great job to our students and Ms. Blake for organizing the event. Situate High School hosted the DECA Life Skills Conference on Wednesday, May 14. It was also an incredible event. It was about eight schools, their IXL programs performed, and they, Situate High School, presented their Sailor Launch Program. Spring for the Arts took place on Thursday, May 15. It was a great event that showcased both middle school, elementary school, and high school artwork. And students in Intro to Engineering Design, a project Lead the Way engineering course, were invited to participate in the Applied Learning Showcase at the New Balance Track in Boston. This applied learning project supports schools in implementing high-quality curriculum in a variety of subject areas and grade levels. Our students worked with our IXL program to identify areas where assistive devices would be beneficial for students getting throughout the day. And also, on Friday, last Friday, prom took place at the Granite Links Golf Course in Quincy, and our junior class was very excited for the event, along with seniors. And in guidance news, AP exams took place the weeks of May 12 and May 18. And all 59 AP environmental students took the exam, which is quite an achievement because we love when all students sign up, and we wish Situate High School the best for AP students. We did have a technical issue with the AP psychology exam, so students will be taking that one this Friday, but that was nationwide. Any questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any question?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think we are going to go a little bit out of order and take number five over number four, just to have Senator O'Connor and Representative Kearney present to us. So, thanks for your introduction. Come on up. Thank you both for being here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us. I'm Representative Patrick Kearney, and joined by our state Senator Patrick O'Connor. We have a little briefing that we put together. I think it's on the Zoom call as well. We're going to give you a little update on where we're at with our state budget process, what we have going on with bills, some of the bills that we filed, so there's going to be policy, funding discussion, previous years, and then future forecasts as it relates to all of the aid that this district is going to get, but also all of the districts are going to get. Statewide.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to present before the Situate School Committee. This has been something that we try and do as often as we can. We try and get every single community, whether it be the Select Board or the Council in the city of Weymouth, and all the school committees to try and really give an update on what's going on. But I think especially now with almost every single municipality in a municipal funding crisis, because of, in my opinion, rising cost of health insurance pretty much being the biggest driver that we have going on, we want to really detail, so we're working at the state level to try to address some of these issues specifically when it comes to education funding in particular as well. So, we started our Senate budget today. We got out around four, and tomorrow and Wednesday and probably Thursday, we'll be in pretty late, and some of the things that we're looking to address will hopefully provide some relief, the same way that the House Representatives did to the municipal budgets, but also look forward as far as what we can do inside of the state to really correct some of the deficiencies that we have inside of our funding formula. So, we can get started.
Yeah, so as I said, we're going to talk a little bit about the budget, talk a little bit about some bills and policy that we filed, and we'll go from there. So, the beginning of January, both of us were sworn in. They are two-year terms. To date, we've had approximately 7,000 bills that have been filed in the House and the Senate, so we will start to work through all of those bills in the committee process. There's, you know, 200 members, 160 reps and 40 senators, but 7,000 bills we'll be working through. We've both been assigned to a couple of different committees, being the Republican Ranking Member on a couple of different committees, and I am on the Ways and Means Committee, so we look closely at the budget. She, the governor, filed her budget, January 22. We had a series of Ways and Means hearings all around the Commonwealth, spanning from Worcester to Gloucester down to Cape, and we touched on all of the things that the governor was asking for funding for. We then came out with our version of the budget, the Ways and Means Budget in the House. It was debated. We passed our budget last month, at the end of April, and the Senate is now taking their budget up, and as Senator O'Connor just said, they'll be in session late most of the week debating their budget.
So, here's a budget recap of the current fiscal year that we're in. The budget was based on $58 billion. This is a tax revenue forecast of $41.5 billion that the state is actually going to bring in through our various different avenues in which we collect taxes. And our federal funding, which obviously has been highlighted more so now than ever before, is at $14.36 billion. The vast majority of this funding goes to assist with our Medicaid, our Mass Health System. In addition to that, there's also federal transportation money and a couple other pockets, but the biggest one is obviously healthcare. Our stabilization fund, our reserves, is at $8.96 billion. It's a $6.9 billion investment we made this current fiscal year into Chapter 70, which is a $319 million increase over the previous fiscal year. We made minimum aid from $30, which came out in the governor's budget. When we debated last year's budget, we upped that to 104. That was, that delivered an extra $37 million to our school districts. Early literacy, this has been something that Governor Haley has highlighted. We rank very well in almost every single one of the national report cards and every academic metric, but literacy was one of the ones where we had fallen behind, and so we have made it, we've committed to making significant investments into early literacy and to try and get really a lot of the school districts aligned with the same curriculum and the same materials. That's been one of the biggest concerns, is that it is kind of up to all individual school committees right now and school administration to pick what sort of literacy initiatives are needed, and we believe that some are better than others when it comes to the testing and that. And unrestricted governmental aid, basically, the money that communities can use for whatever they would like is at $1.3 billion, which is a $38 million increase over the previous fiscal year.
If I can add to that real quick, I'd like to give all of you a shout out and Superintendent Burkehead a shout out. When it comes to early literacy, both Senator O'Connor and I, in the House and the Senate, have really pushed for re-establishing the Free All-Day Kindergarten Grant Program, but this board here really made an effort to make free all-day kindergarten a priority, and I know you guys made that happen a couple years back. That access to free all-day kindergarten increases literacy rates in the third grade by 44%. So, thank you for championing that. Thank you for helping secure the funding in the budget to make sure that that is accessible for families. This is a little snapshot from the Controller's Office. In fiscal year 2024, the town of Situate in total receives $17.13 million in state money. As of date, fiscal year 25, they have received $11.2 million. We expect that to continue to increase. This is a little, go ahead.
There you go.
This is a little bit, a little snapshot on the Student Opportunity Act that both of us were pushing really, really hard for. It reestablished and reopened the Foundation Budget Review, which looks at what school districts get in education funding and unrestricted government aid. As you can see, there's been a significant increase from fiscal year 2022, the first year's Student Opportunity Act, to fiscal year 2026, where we are looking at a $7.2 million, Chapter 70 allocation to Situate, and a $2.4, $2.5-ish million unrestricted government aid. When we first passed this, as was mentioned in the previous slide, there was a $30 per people reimbursement rate in the House budget this year, and I think the Senate budget's the same, we're looking at $150 per people reimbursement rate. So, a 5X increase, we're really, really happy to be talking about that.
Yeah, and whenever we hit on these slides, when we present, we know we need to do more as a state in order to up those numbers. I mean, they're not keeping pace with collective bargaining, they're not keeping pace with inflation, they're not keeping pace with health insurance in particular. But I believe that, and we might get into it in a later slide, we really need to change the funding formula. The funding formula is outdated, and we've basically diverted to just assigning a monetary figure blindly, in some instances, to what every student should get in a minimum school district. Right now, there's 233 minimum school districts inside of Massachusetts, so this is a lot bigger of an issue than just basically trying to pick an arbitrary number and assign that as the value of our contribution every year as a state to our local school districts. There has to be a better way, and we're trying to find a better way. One of the amendments that we have in the Senate budget is to reopen Foundation Budget Review. Another amendment is to actually open it up every three years rather than 10 years, which we have right now, and we need to do this because the funding formula is just simply not keeping up to date with all of the challenges the school districts are facing right now, and we need to do a lot more to be a better partner as a state. But with that said, you know, when we are debating this current budget before us, we increased our budget by about $4 billion, and 64% of that right off the top is for health insurance costs that we're incurring as a state. So, we're facing the same financial challenges that communities are facing, where discretionary funding is very hard to find right now inside of our budget as well.
This is a little snapshot on some of the other funding that we've been able to secure. A few months back, we lost our federal support for universal school meals. Both the House and the Senate and the governor took up the slack that the federal government missed on, and we allocated $170 million in supplemental budget. Situate got $1,021,000 for meals. We have seen that districts that have implemented this universal free school meals, it's been a game changer for students. Students are going home on the weekends with meals in their backpacks. Their learning outcomes are increasing. It's really a phenomenal program. It's really difficult to focus on academic teaching and classroom settings when you're thinking about what your next meal is going to be. So, proud to, proud to talk about that. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to continue to step up to the plate and match all of the shortfalls of the federal government's cuts. So, that's something that we're discussing. I think the budget will probably be a little bit delayed due to the fact that of that $14 billion that the senator was just talking about, a lot of it is that Medicaid Mass Health reimbursement, and we don't know what DC is going to do about that. There's a lot of discussions about them changing Medicaid reimbursements to the states. So, Chapter 90, half a million dollars for transportation funding. I know I've heard from all of you on Circuit Breaker and out-of-district school placements, $1.8 million for that. Special education transportation, just under $300,000. Charter school reimbursement, not a problem that we face significantly as much as some of the other school districts like Boston, but $111,000 for that and $47,000 for libraries. Want to talk a little bit about earmarks?
Sure. So, last year's budget, we really get three earmarks, member-directed spending, which is a better way than calling them earmarks with the negative connotation earmarks have been used. But the Sail Home in Situate, we love that project. We think that's awesome, that the town's stepped up so much to support that through CPC. $25,000 with the Friends of Situate FACS. Both Representative Kearney and I met with them, and they were kind of getting low on their budget, and they don't need a lot every year to, you know, continue to operate, so that was something that will probably keep them operating for quite some time. And then $50,000 for the Cole Parkway redevelopment project. And then, obviously, there's a lot of organizations, local nonprofit groups that support people in the Situate community as well as students that we support pretty rigorously throughout the budget, trying to make sure we get as many dollars as we possibly can back to the South Shore to do some of the amazing work that some of these local nonprofits are doing. So, then here's, here's this year's budget. So, it's a $61.3 billion budget, 3.61 million, excuse me, billion-dollar increase over the previous year. The budget that was presented and passed in the House and the one in the Senate is actually a more conservative budget, $647 million below what the governor put forward. This incorporates $41.2 billion in state tax collections. Stabilization Fund basically holds, you know, with the investments that that has at $8.3 billion. $7.3 billion this year for Chapter 70, which is a $460 million increase over the previous fiscal year. Again, as both Representative Kearney and I talked about, it's $150 per pupil, and then special education Circuit Breaker is fully funded, which is $682 million, which is up $550 million from the previous fiscal year, but we were actually able to address that, closeout, not a closeout, but a supplemental budget that we put forward to get more money into the stabilization fund. $29.9 million for Metco, for the Metco program, and then $1.34 billion in unrestricted general governmental aid. And again, it's one of those things that we wish we could do more, but with the tight budget that we have, we felt like this was, was good to be able to at least get this out to our communities. And again, we're looking to figure out ways creatively in, you know, with everything going on at the federal level, too, how do we maintain what we have here in Massachusetts and then grow and invest into the core priorities, education obviously being one of the, if not the, top one.
The House budget, if I can touch on that real quick, I think we were $500 million under the governor's budget, so a little bit different than the Senate, but not much. Again, I think we're going to be a little delayed in what, when we finally sign the budget, just because of those DC-proposed cuts. We were a little surprised when March's tax revenue came in 13.7% above benchmark. So, some of the projections that we were receiving by the Department of Revenue and the Secretary of A&amp;F, we were a little surprised that we had collected as much as we did, but we also don't know what we're going to lose in federal reimbursement. So, it's a little bit of a question mark right now, but we're doing everything that we can to, to come up with a good, fiscally responsible budget.
I mean, generally, outside of what's looming down in DC, the state budget's generally pretty good right now. I mean, we're facing the same correction that all the other communities faced when you had a lot of excess revenue come in during the years of COVID, when a lot of money from the federal government was being distributed to businesses and to individuals and all the other different ways in which more money just came into our economy. But I would say that, you know, we're pretty, we're doing pretty well. It's just, there is, you know, a few issues that we need to address. We need to be a stronger partner to our municipalities, that's for sure. Coming from municipal government 12 years before entering this, I get that fully. And then, we need to fix some of the systems that we have in place that are broken, but generally, you know, we're in a good spot. It's just, we don't know what's going to come from Washington and what magnitude that's going to be. When you look, we have $8 billion and change basically in our stabilization account, so we could withstand some of the cuts and basically drain our reserves, but our hope is that these cuts are not going to be realized as significant as some might have, you know, projected they are. So, but it's a wait and see, and the feds don't have to do their budget till the fall, so we're kind of basing our budget off of what's the reality now and not what could potentially happen in the future.
And Situate's done a really good job on some of those previous federal funds, on spending them on one-time capital projects and not hiring, you know, folks that are trying to figure out whether you're going to have the money to keep on or not. So, we're lucky in that regard that all of you and our select board has done a really good job at prioritizing capital projects and using that money on one-time things that have improved the community. You want to take one?
Yeah, so, so one of the amendments that I have probably going to be debated tomorrow is increasing Circuit Breaker 5% annually from the 75% figure to 80, then 85, 90, and so on. I believe that this has to be done. We need to continue to find buckets of money, like when we talked about the free school meals, special education transportation reimbursements, charter school reimbursements, we need to continue to find buckets of money that we can send to communities in this period of time that it will take us to fix Chapter 70. And in addition to that, I think the other biggest fiscal challenge that municipalities have is the unfunded pension liability. So, we're entering the last five or six years of that right now, and those last five or six years are heavy investment years to catch up to fully funding unfunded pension liability. And those are, you know, mistakes of the past in the 70s and 80s that we're still currently addressing right now, but if we're able to continue to get pockets of money out to communities, like increased reimbursement for Circuit Breaker, we're able to work in the next few years to fix Chapter 70, and then five or six years from now, communities are fully funded in their pension obligation, there will be other things that are looming, like OPEV and other liabilities that communities are going to have to figure out a funding schedule for, but I think that that's where the silver lining kind of comes of where we're at, where we're at right now. I represent eight communities. I believe half of them have attempted overrides this year or the last year. It's sort of becoming the norm. I talked with my colleagues, I know that Pat does in the House, too, and it's happening everywhere. It's really an unsustainable expense that communities have to pay for health insurance, and you have all these, you know, liabilities on the back end of that, and we've seen communities where their entire 2.5% override plus new growth has been eaten up just by health insurance increases, and that just can't happen. We, we as legislators, I think, and also, you know, the reality should probably strike on Washington, and I'm sure that this is happening across the country right now, and there needs to be a better way. We've created a great healthcare system, but it's really hard to access and it's very expensive, and we need to figure out a better way to control costs.
We're also in the first year of receiving, we thought was going to be anywhere from $1.7 to $2 billion in extra money from the millionaire's tax, which is a 9% tax on every dollar earned on income of over $1 million. That number came in this year, I think, at $2.4 billion.
$1 million.
So, that money specifically earmarked for education and transportation, and I know the senator just mentioned a lot of the health insurance costs and unfunded pension liability, but we're also doing a really good job at tightening up the MTA and making some critical investments in the transportation system that hopefully support the viability of that system going forward. So, I think that there will be some money for education and transportation as we tighten those things up and then hopefully reopen the discussions of the Foundation Budget Review.
Yeah. Another idea that I had and have pitched as well is an inflation bank. 4.5% is the cap on inflation that we have right now for our school districts. School districts have seen 11% inflation over different years, and so when we tried to put the numbers together to see if we could fund inflation, it just didn't work statewide. It was just way too big of a number. And so, one of the things that I came up with was, all right, we cap it at 4.5% inflation, but any time that a school district be in a year in which inflation, let's say, was at 6%, they could then bank the 1.5% inflation that they didn't get. Any year in which inflation falls below 4.5%, they could then apply it to that, to that, to that year. And then, another bill that I have is financial literacy, so this has been something that I've worked on for eight years now. My biggest complaint about the State House is that things just go way too slow.
Amen.
We have Treasurer Goldberg on board now, so it's not just a legislative priority, it's a constitutional officer priority. Kate Lippa-Garabedian, State Representative, is our sponsor on the House side. This has been something that we've been really working, and it's a really, it's a It's a really, it's a really cool space. So three years ago, we were able to get money, a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, which was actually matched by a founder out in Silicon Valley, whose mission now is to bring financial literacy to all fifty states. Tim Ranzaneta, who runs Next Gen Personal Finance. And he was able to match it with a hundred and twenty five thousand. We, we put in place a summit at Bridgewater State University where we had educators from across the state, basically on a handshake agreement, say that they would incorporate financial literacy to their curriculum by taking this three-day, three-day summit course that we had over Bridgewater State. The, the technology in this, in this space is incredible. We've talked with a bunch of companies. There's one that actually has a metaverse component to this, where in kindergarten, it's K through twelve education, where, you know, they'll learn about dollars and cents in kindergarten to, you know, storing some money away for a paper route in middle school and other things. And what they have is, they have a metaverse where you can do a mock simulation of opening up a bank account or going to buy a car or get a car loan, things like that. And once they start in kindergarten with this program called Stickball, they get a sort of a dashboard where they're able to, you know, be part of this metaverse and they answer questions on financial literacy in order to get virtual currency in order to then spend on certain things. And as they continue to go through, one of the things to the educators in the room too that's really unique about this program is that actually tests and realizes through artificial intelligence the level of literacy and other different curriculum that the student can comprehend and bases the questions to that level of comprehension, which is just fascinating to me that those, that those things exist. And so anyway, they, they use this program K through twelve, and then literally once they graduate from high school, they turn off the simulation model. It's a, it's a personal finance tool that they've been trained on for the past thirteen years of their educational career. So I'm really proud of this. My hope is that we can continue to get this going. It's a mandate, which has been the one thing that's kind of holding it up, but we have got it. We've been able to get it passed out of committee without the mandate, but we strongly believe that there has to be a mandate associated with this, because if it's not, then school districts that have the resources to do it will and those who don't won't. And that's not a, an equitable way in, in order to incorporate what I believe to be a really strong foundational tool that students need when they graduate from high school, which is understanding financial literacy.
Any questions?
Well, first of all, thanks for coming. Now, I think, I don't know, for some reason, we just haven't ever come together, so thanks for coming out and giving us some, some information. I have to say, I agree with all of these initiatives. I was curious about the circuit breaker. Obviously, the increasing circuit breaker is vital to all districts. I get a kind of a larger question is, is there an answer that puts, and I know that it's kind of complicated, but puts out-of-district spending on the state rather than putting it back on the district? I mean, ultimately, this would do it if you get to a hundred percent.
Yeah.
So I think a hundred percent is slim that that's going to happen, but perhaps it could.
No, I, I don't, the goal was to, is to get to a hundred percent. And a lot of us feel very strongly about that. But we understand that it's also reimbursement and it's, it's not, the way we do it is not working for, for a lot of school districts. And I know you and I have talked at length about this, but the increases in tuition costs for our district school placements and the percentages of those increases is just something that DESI and the administration really needs to get under control, because it's just not sustainable.
Yeah, I mean, I, my opinion of this is I think that taking care of the most vulnerable in society is, is our responsibility. And we need to get to a better system, because we hear from superintendents that, you know, are saying that there is a real challenge right now between out-of-district special education and then, you know, the, the, you know, standard sort of traditional education that they're producing inside of their, their school districts. And there has to be a better option for that, because you can't hit special education versus general and vice versa, and that's happening right now. And I believe that that's only going to continue to grow if we don't address this. So what I would like to see, my proposal is, once we got to a hundred percent, I believe that there should be some sort of either partnership, communication, or actual full state takeover by DESI of out-of-school placements, because we've seen that rapture through communities as well, where, you know, you have parents who believe that their child should have a different IEP in place, and it just becomes, you know, pitting neighbor against neighbor on some of these decisions that are incredibly difficult for school administrators to make, and it really shouldn't be that way. And then also, when, when dealing with those decisions, there also, and in most, you know, instances, there's not, but there also shouldn't be that in the back of the head, oh wow, this is going to really eat into the, to the school budget if, you know, the, the IEP determines that there's an out-of-school district placement to a placement that has tuition at, you know, two hundred or three hundred thousand dollars. There should be something that's a lot more streamlined, that's taken over by the state and is not going to be one of those, you know, continued fiscal challenges that you have every year. And I think that it's a moral thing as well. I think that the state should take this on and take it away from municipalities and fully fund it.
Okay. So just one other quick question. I think you mentioned the, the potential recalculation of net school spending. I'm just curious how that would be impacted by circuit breaker. I guess it wouldn't, it's just going to be a different value, right? And that school spending is whatever, sixty thousand dollars this year or whatever it is.
Yeah, so it would, it would basically take away the whole per pupil minimum aid school district formula that's in place right now, where we, you know, pick a number. This year it'd be a hundred and fifty dollars. There should be a much more thorough analysis done. We're not sure where it's going to go. I mean, it's going to be about a two-year process of the, of the Foundation Budget Review Commission going through all of these documents and trying to figure out the best new way to move forward. But I believe we need a new way to move forward. And once we get there, my hope is that it's based on actual data, statistics, what the school district on the ground in real time is facing, rather than even circuit breakers a year out reimbursement that you get the previous fiscal year. So we needed to be better at dealing with the real challenge that the school districts are facing right now. And it gives us a good, I mean, I'm excited and optimistic about the opportunity to, to look at and work at the new funding formula that we, we have in the state. And I think it will be much more equitable, and I think that we're going to see increases, you know, throughout all of the school districts that are currently minimum aid if we do this the right way. And on top of that, the Student Opportunity Act is fully funded after next fiscal year. And we've shown that we can invest around five hundred million dollars annually to fully fund that seven-year program. And I don't see why we would put the brakes on that and stop it's fully funded. Let's take that five hundred million dollars we've been investing and reimagine a different way to invest it. And obviously, keeping in mind that basically twenty-six school districts that get the majority of the Student Opportunity Act money, and let's look at, you know, the next twenty-six, the next fifty, or all, you know, three hundred plus school districts we have in the state, because everyone's in need of financial, financial support right now from the state.
I echo the Senator's comments on, on taking care of the most vulnerable. The other thing that we both have really been pushing DESI on is when you're approving these tuition increases and out-of-district school placements, is actually making sure that those educational facilities are providing the educational training and educational opportunities that they say they are. Because we hear from so many different people that, you know, despite us spending three hundred plus thousand dollars in our district school placement, that their student is not getting the services that they need. So I think DESI and both of us have pushed on, on the commissioner to, to really look into whether or not these service providers are actually doing what they say they are supposed to be doing.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I was actually going to make that point about the out-of-district that. And I think the other thing that's really hard for us is the unpredictability of it, just that these swings can happen. I think Tom, was it Tom that had the, the quote about the six-figure swing? And that is just really hard to plan for too. So if there was some way to sort of know that there could be an increase, but it wouldn't be over a certain amount, or that there was some sort of sense of predictability, I think would also be really helpful. But I had a different question. I was curious. So I was at a community event last week. It was our state of the town breakfast. I haven't even had a chance to talk to you guys about this, but I was just there in the audience. But there was a question asked, and then afterwards, several other people mentioned it to me, just kind of one-on-one about just concerning special education. And, you know, that's the area in which the federal government has the largest sort of oversight, and that's also the area, I believe, in our budget, that we get the largest amount of money from the federal government. And so the question was a concern, you know, what, what could happen? Could this be cut? What would happen if it was? We've not discussed it as a group, but I think our track record shows that we, you know, strongly support special education and civil rights, which is the other piece of IDA and the federal oversight of that. And so, you know, I, I, I think that our state will not, you know, leave districts out to sea on this. I don't foresee Massachusetts walking away from either of those concepts, but I was just curious if you had anything else to add from your perspective, just to sort of, if you have other insight or information or thoughts on, on that.
I think our priorities, and I, I think we can speak for the Senate as well, has always been prioritizing the most vulnerable, whether that is with stepping up to the plate where the federal government is missing the mark on, on special end or universal school meals. We have eight point three billion dollars in the stabilization fund. It's there for a rainy day, and we're, we're looking at a storm coming, and we're not going to be afraid to, to step up to the plate with the resources that we have.
Yeah, we're going to protect ourselves too. I mean, we're, we're funding the Attorney General with the most money that she's ever received in an allocation to file any and all lawsuits that we believe, you know, obstruct our values as a state. And we stand behind that, Republicans and Democrats, you know, against drastic cuts from this administration on a whole multitude of, of issues, not just in education, but obviously in healthcare and research, innovation and progress, which we've already, you know, kind of seen that attack happen. Now, we're, we're very concerned about what's going to happen, and we don't have all the resources in the world to, to fully fund it, but we will, we will fight tooth and nail to try and make sure that we win in areas in which we believe that we're right. And in other areas that may get held up in courts or whatever the result is, I do believe that we'll be supplementing a lot of potential cuts from the federal government. But my hope is that the courts see this the way that I think most people see this and reverse a lot of the decisions that are being made. And, and hopefully our Congress can restore those cuts or not make them as they deliberate their budget.
The hardest thing for us and for all of you is the uncertainty of it, because we don't, every day it seems to be something different that gets cut and we're looking at being slashed. And, and it's tough, really tough to plan and forecast when you don't know exactly what to plan for. So we're, I know you are trying to have those discussions. We're having those discussions as well, and we'll continue to be good partners and do everything that we can to step up.
Yeah, and it's as chaotic as it is to the average, everyday person who's watching this, as it is to the state government right now. And we have no direction, and we, you know, are very concerned that we're losing a federal partner.
Thank you.
Well, first, I want to thank you for the future fight that you will be undertaking for, for us and all the kids. I have a question about the early literacy initiatives. I'm just curious as to, you mentioned a statewide program, and I'm just curious how you would, how that would happen, like how, who would be deciding on the early literacy, early literacy program? And it would, would that be mandatory to supplement other programs?
So I know that the governor, when she gave her first State of the State, this was one of the initiatives that she had announced that she was launching. We funded it at twenty million last year. I believe it's a thirty million in this year's budget. And there's an early literacy commission. There's a early education and care sort of group that's out there right now, working with DESI and others to, to fully kind of put this in. I'll see sort of what regs they've promulgated or things of that nature and get back to, you know, you all about what, you know, I can try and get like a one pager on where, where we're currently at with that. But I know the investment's been made. Some school districts, I believe, have received grant funding. I don't think it's going to be a mandated approach. I think it's going to be sort of a slow rollout in order for all the school districts to get the funding, get caught, get caught up and then sort of move from there. But I know that they, they do want to get this done in a, you know, a three or four year window. I forget what the, what the exact, what the actual timeframe is.
Yep.
Well, thank you both so much for, for being here. Just a quick comment, I think that your, your attention to school lunch, free school lunches is just fantastic. I think you both said it perfectly well about how it just can't be underscored how important that is for just a kid cannot learn without, with, you know, with an empty belly coming in the morning. And the mental health impact of that is just difficult to measure for parents and caregivers and, you know, the four kids in my house, just taking that off, that burden off of people in the morning, it's, it's, it's amazing. And it's, it's just something that really glad to see that that advocacy continues for that. It's definitely impactful. And the financial literacy, that sounds like a very promising program and kind of interested to see how it rolls out. Maria and I were in Atlanta for the National School Board Association Conference, and we were able to present there. And something that we, we touched on different, our presentation was about some different connections, and so actually talked about credit for life and how Situate does that program, and it's so fantastic. And it just seems like our audience was intrigued by all of this financial literacy and those connections and community building. So it does seem like Massachusetts maybe is sort of a leader in this area, so that's, that's great, so.
Yeah, my hope is we get it done.
Yeah.
For sure. I'm glad you mentioned the mental health piece of that too, because when the federal government was doing the, the universal meals, they weren't necessarily universal, and there was a stigma involved with that. And the way that we've worked with local school districts has really taken any of the stigma away from, from that. So thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you so much.
I just want to thank you both for coming tonight. It was very informative and all your support of schools in the state, but also Situate specifically. Anytime I've reached out, you've both gotten back to me right away with answers to my questions and support for our students and teachers. So thank you very much. And I wanted to just open that offer up to you as well with these visionary ideas that you have. I think, you know, it sounds like a re-sports mall, I certainly do with financial literacy, free lunch and all that kind of stuff. So if you ever need us as a resource or have questions or want us to help support these types of bills or with the new commissioner that's coming in July one, we're, we're a resource for you as well. So thank you.
Thank you, really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Thanks. That's awesome. Thanks. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
All right, we'll report to our leadership report our Director of Human Resources, Ms. Luca. Hello. Thank you for your patience.
I believe Ryan has most rights.
I do. Catch on up.
I'll just talk loudly, can you hear me?
Yeah. Yep.
So first, I want to start by thanking you all for having me here at the school committee and superintendent for our head for the opportunity to share some of the great work that we've been doing in the human resource department here at Situate. So we're going to start by just sharing the agenda for today. I'm going to give you all another MTRS update, talk about and share some of the memberships and partnerships that we have now in our HR department, talk a little bit about our presence at career fairs this year, and then give you some next steps for the department and where I see us going. So just to remind you, last year when I was here at the meeting, I gave you an update of where we were with our MTRS reporting. We had a backlog that was dated back to November twenty twenty-two, and that was statewide. It was due to the pandemic. And so right now currently, and this has already been updated since I finalized the slides, all of our SPS, MTRS members, so that's administrators and educators that are part of MTRS can now see their contributions through November of twenty twenty-three. All of our reporting, all of our deduction reporting up until April of twenty twenty-five has been submitted. We are, I am currently working with our rep to get those reports released in real time. He actually released November today. They have to release them in order, so they have to go in chronological order to release them. And then once we get all of last school year released, then he and I will work together to get all of this school year's released, but at least he has the reports in hand. We will continue to work to get these reports released as quick as possible so that our members can log in and see their contribution and their service, especially for our members that are retiring and ones that are looking forward to retiring and want to know where they stand. So that's the, the push behind it to make sure that they have the accurate information that they need when they log into the My TRS portal. The picture on the side is just to give you an update of what the The picture on the side is just to give you an update of um what the portal looks like now for members when they log in uh on the last slide. We go to the next slide. So there are um a couple of memberships and partnerships that uh we've committed to um since um my tenure here at um Central Public Schools. Talk about a few of them here. Handshake uh was already, we've continued that membership with them. They are um a place where we're able to post jobs and access, and have access to college educators. Uh, so that is uh whether it's for temporary substitute work or while they're still in school, as well as catching any uh recent graduates that are coming out. Um, we also have a membership with Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education. It is a networking organization that gives access to diverse candidates. Um, we also have um committed to um um having a membership with NIMNET, which is a job board committed to diversity recruiting. So we post our jobs there and it pushes it out and gives us access to candidates um uh that are diverse. Um, and then SHRM, which is a Society for Human Resource Management, AKA ASHRM, um is a resource for me as your Director of H R. Um, it allows me to um have networking opportunities, but also if there were any templates or anything of that nature that I needed access to, I'm able to log into that site and just gather information and then just network and see um what we're doing in the industry to make sure that we stay at the forefront um in our human resource department here. So to the fun part, so um I've had the opportunity to um attend two career fairs. Um, the goal is to continue to increase that, to get the word out about Situate. Um, most of the time when I go, people haven't heard of it. Um, so um it's really nice to be able to talk about how great it is to work here in Situate with people and share some of the great things that we offer. Um, so in February, I went to the UMass Dartmouth Job Internship Expo. They had two days. I was able to attend the second day. And um just recently, I went to the V S U, Bridgewater State University Educational Career Fair, which is the one that I went to last year. So the top features are just features of how I set up our table. Um, you all have swag. We'll talk about that on the next slide, um, just so you can see it in person and also take some home. Thank you to Superintendent Burkett and Dr. Rab for approving um the budget so that I could buy our um swag uh to, to give out to our um interested um, our interested potential um employees. Um, and also I actually uh pass it out as welcome gifts to all our new hires when I um have our new hire meetings with them. We are also, Handshake is one of the partnerships that I mentioned on the last slide. I also use that um, that membership to sign up for various career fairs. Sometimes they're um free and other times they have small um fees for them. But they are doing a great job of pushing those out to make sure that we can hit all over Massachusetts and just get the word out about who we are and what we represent. Um, the last thing that I will share is that we also, I am continuing as a part of a connection to our strategic plan to pass out our Lit Oneagers and our MECO Program Oneagers, um, just so people can understand all the great work that we're doing behind the Lit work as well as what MECO is, because there, believe it or not, there are people who have never heard of it. And it's really important that we catch at each drop there's our um young educators that are um up and coming so they can know, you know, what it is that we offer here. So this is our new um S P S H R Q R code. Um, you don't have to take your phones out now, but if you look at your swag, there are stickers on all of your swag. Um, so when I pass it out to people at our job fairs, as well as our new employees, if you scan it, though you don't have to scan it now, um, it will open up to our S P S School Spring website that I shared with you last year. Um, so I'm continuing to find new and um, new ways to push our information out there and um just be with the times and making sure that um people can um get directly to us as quickly as possible and let us know that they're interested to apply here. So feel free to test that out. Let me know if it works. I test it all the time before um I give it out. Um, but thanks to our um new I T director, Jackie, who showed me a site where I can create one and say that there's just so many and doing so. And lastly, I just want to share a couple of the next steps. Um, as you may know, we're closing out school year twenty-four, twenty-five. So what that looks like in H R, that's processing our end of year. Um, making sure that all of our staff have their appointment letter so they know um what their roles are going into next school year, as well as making sure that their accruals are turned over in a timely manner so they know and can prepare for anything, whether it's medical or time off that they need to take. Um, we are currently um in the process of hiring for our E S Y program for the summer. So those hires are coming through, as well as a few hires that are coming through for next school year. Um, one of the things that um Director Adams and myself have been, have worked on and we're finalizing is a dual welcome video with uh myself and him um to assist the search committees um that we have here in Situate in their efforts to have the most equitable experience during the search process. Um, in this video, I welcome everyone. Uh, Mr. Adams provides a brief overview of the ten Lit commitments. And then we just kind of say thank you and wish them the best in their search um as we look to find the best um staff to um come aboard here at Situate. And then lastly, um, thank you, Dr. Rab, for approving um our, um, we were able to get a docu-sign. Um, so my next big H R project is to, thank you. Um, so my next um big H R project is to build that so that, so one, just to remind you, um, last year, we um, I've brought in and built all the modules to make our hiring process for applicants completely um paperless. And now um that new hire onboarding process um will move from paper to fully electronic just to make it more efficient with timing and also to cut down on errors. And also um to make sure that we are able to have access to information like when we need to find it or whatnot. A little easier. Any questions?
I, no, this is great stuff. I love the efficiency. I guess I, I guess I just always assumed that it was that way. So who knows? Um, I guess, I'm just curious, uh, whether, I don't know if folks know enough, but we get like an all S P S email, like we are on it as a result of being spoken to. So we get the updates of like, here are the open jobs.
Yes.
And I'm just curious, relatively, are our jobs not like openings, like typical? Are they lower than you, than, than you would expect? Are the hires, are turnover, are things like that? And I want to see how that turns into all of your recruiting efforts. Like, have your recruiting efforts paid off? To fill those jobs?
Um, that's a great question. Um, I would say that Situate um has done a great job of making this an ideal place to work. There's not a lot of turnovers. Uh, what I've seen in my two years here, there's been more like poor retirements. Um, we haven't had that much turnover. Um, this year we have about six um S T A positions that we're posting. And some of those are from one-year appointments, like the jobs that were created that are now going to be full-time. So um, there's not a lot. I wouldn't compare it, um, I don't have a comparison right now to like a district that is similar size that, but I can get back to you via email, um, if that's helpful. Um, one of the things that I'm looking to do with NIMNET this year is to actually post those jobs there and then see if we get any candidate that actually identifies, that they actually saw our job in there um to help with um bringing in more diverse candidates.
No, I don't, I don't need to do that. I was just, I just, I see the list and I'm like, I don't know if this is good or bad. I don't know if we want to have openings or not have openings. I don't really know how to digest it. Yeah.
So I think every year you're going to have retirements for the most part. And so that, when you have a district that is um just filling retirements, that goes to show the hard work that you all are doing, that um Assistant Administration are doing and all the educators that are here that work here, that makes it a great place to work where people don't want to leave.
Do you mean like the non, like coaching and?
Just in general. I just don't know how to, I, I'd like to see.
Coaching stuff has to go.
Yeah, coaching stuff.
That has to go.
So yeah, every year we do repost all the coaching jobs and um all the stipend positions that we have contractually, those you're posting yearly. So that, having that system electronic and um actually making that application shorter for our internal employees, so they're not spending so much time on the computer, uh reapplying for the jobs they reapply for every year, that has definitely um helped out with the hiring process and making that more efficient as well.
Great. Thank you.
Actually, one, one quick question. Sorry, I just thought of this. Um, I was just curious, like, I think in typical, you know, companies that are not education and for-profit, the for-profit world, the H R department would have some like purview over um employees who are on improvement plans and things like that. You don't serve that function in Situate, right? In a public school, like that would be all the principal or their manager. Is that right?
That is correct. There is some oversight. If there is any discipline that comes with that, then I would um come into that process there. Um, I work very closely with Assistant Superintendent Lynch uh when people do um direct their um questions to me about evaluation and um improvement plans. And then I make sure that I direct them to the right um place. Um, if there's non-union um questions for evaluations, I do support like hiring managers and helping them through their evaluation process uh with their employees. But as far as like our um educators or whatnot, that is where I'm at here, Assistant Superintendent Lynch.
Okay. Yeah, just curious. Thank you.
Thank you all. Enjoy your swag. All right, uh, Dr. Rab.
Thank you.
Go ahead. I was going to give you more trouble.
He's ready. We know, we know.
It's not fancy. It's just.
So we have two things this evening. Um, the first is an additional proprietary item for the Hathley, Cushing Hathley Elementary School product, project. A couple of months ago, Doran Whittier, we're here, they explained that process. Uh, in a nutshell, anytime we go out to bid on a product, it doesn't matter what the product is, we want to make sure there are at least three different versions of that product, three different alternates. Anytime there is only one or two alternates, we have to designate that product as proprietary. And that's a decision of the school committee and the school building committee. Last week, uh, two weeks ago, the school building committee met and approved this one item as proprietary and now before the school committee for a similar vote. So similarly, it is for extruded aluminum exterior wall panels. And there are two manufacturers, and not just one, but there are two manufacturers that do this. Um, and it was recently discovered that the previous third specified manufacturer in this product category could not match the finished warranty provisions of the other two manufacturers and had to be dropped from the specification. So that's why they want all originalists. After a reasonable search, Doran Whittier could not find another third equal product available in the U S market for this product type. And so they're asking that the school committee approve it as a proprietary specification. Um, for the sake of the vote, there is, I believe, in your blue agenda, there's a rather lengthy um suggested school building committee vote, which unfortunately I do have to ask you read into the minutes.
Don't worry. The, the school committee vetted this out.
Practice holding.
Thoroughly.
Yes, very thoroughly.
Very thoroughly vetted the items.
All right.
Yep. We have a motion on the proprietary items for.
All right, all right. I make a motion that the school committee, the awarding authority for the Situate Hathley Elementary School Project, having found and determined after discussion with Doran Whittier Architects, the project designer, and after reasonable investigation of other feasible alternatives as reviewed by the owner's procurement official, that it is in the best interest of the owner and the public at large to have certain portions of the work as detailed above as presented be included in the specifications for this project as proprietary specifications and not provide for or equal substitutions.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
A complicated way of saying we couldn't find white panels.
Thank you very much. Uh, the second is to accept a donation, but it's a little bit unusual from our normal donations. So we have a firm um that has reached out and they, it's called Sand and Water. And they would like to donate two T-shirt making machines. So they're the, you know, typical heat press T-shirt making machines. And all told, um, this is about a three thousand dollar object.
Yeah.
And so they're asking us if we would pay six hundred and fifty dollars and they'll donate two thousand four hundred and ten. That's a deal I'll take. And so I would, I would, I, Mr. Mackey was in charge of our um DECA and the business program. I can't remember the name of the store, but it's like, I have it right now. It's a very catchy nautical thing. Yes. And that, the store right outside.
The high school.
The high school store.
Yeah.
Um, has reviewed the product, is interested in it, is excited about getting it. And so all I would ask this evening is the school committee to approve um a two thousand four hundred and ten dollar donation from Sand and Water, and then we'll take care of the invoice and pay for it.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
So this is those machines that, yeah, as you see at all the sports events that you pay ninety dollars for a sweatshirt.
Yeah, okay.
It'll help us mass produce them.
Good.
Save money.
Yeah, great. It's going to be some, the merchandise spreading. Maybe for us? Yeah?
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the Sand and Water Shirt Press Machine donation as presented.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
That's great. That was very generous.
The Shit Yar. That's the name of the store.
Oh, shit, yes. Should be art. All right, uh, celebrating student learning tonight. S H A's teachers. This is how, oh, they're, they're on hand and. Doing that to get an update on the Robats Robotics Team. Hello.
Hello.
Doran can't hide. I didn't know what I was doing. She dropped my jacket. What else did I get?
You can sit down and we'll do that better. And then you guys flip through the slides and just press down.
Um, hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Sumaya. Thank you so much for being here and listening to us. Um, really, we're just going to tell you who we are. For the cyber sellers, we're Situate's uh Robotics Team. We've been active for about five years. And this is really an overview of um our year. And we'd just like to show you what we've got. These are the passwords.
So as for introductions, I'm Angelica Hajem. I'm a junior. And I mainly specialize in design and building.
I'm Rose. I'm also a junior. And this year I focused a lot on programming, uh, partly building and strategy during the game season.
Uh, well, I'm Sumaya. I'm freshman. Um, and I do a bit of mechanics and, and the other stuff.
And I'm actually Nick Garrity, but it says Nick Solomon.
I was like, you're not Nick Solomon. One Nick for another Nick. Perfect.
Yeah, I do coding. I also do a little bit of building too.
So we'd first of all like to thank our sponsors. As you might see, these are from all of Situate. And we like to think we have Situate as our wonderful backing community and a little family who makes our creativity, knowledge and laughs we've had this season possible. Um, we thank our sponsors and whoever you may know who are with these companies sincerely. Um, and we just would want to let you know that you've been, are one of our greatest supports. And just thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yep, just branching off from that, we'd really love to extend our gratitude toward all of you in Situate Public Schools. The help that you've given us has truly been tremendous. And it's inexplicable to describe the impact that you've had on our team this year.
Uh, we've had a very busy year, this year, as uh we do every year. Uh, robotics has been a year-round um team, a commitment. Um, and we have been working hard throughout the year at our preseason events, um, all the way through our tournament events. And even just recently, we've had um fundraisers and some uh, some more events. Like just this weekend, we had a Barbie car race where a lot of the um neighboring F R C teams um came together um and raced, use our, use our knowledge to create um vehicles, little toy vehicles, but um to, you know, kind of build community and have a good time. Um, robotics is just a year-round event. It's a, it's good.
We were wearing helmets.
We were wearing helmets. Um, yeah, so robotics, a year-round event, but it is also extremely active, especially in the middle of the year during our um competition season. In the lab specifically, there are tons of different subgroups working together um to make a functioning robot for this year, um, this year's game. Each year has a new game. And this year, we've had teams of people working on one robot to build a functioning elevator, um, attempting to build a climbing device to lift this massive hundred-pound robot off the ground and some other um components that have been very important. Um, the lab is always busy.
Yes, now you know a little bit about the lab, but what happens day to day? Really, we all branch off. Really, we all branch off into our own groups to form this big team, all working on different parts of the robot simultaneously, use different tools, all kinds of, like water jets, sand belts, bench grinder, you name it, we probably used it or tried to use it. Um, and really what it comes down to is being able to thrive in chaos while organizing it at the same time, and learning how to work as a team to achieve a goal, really together through all kinds of different struggles.
Yeah, I promise we're safe, no one's lost fingers yet, but, uh, maybe a little concussion, but we're fine.
It wasn't for robotics. Must be clear.
Now, what do the students actually do on competition days, you might wonder? So, to explain it to you, um, competitions typically are robots competing against others to perform a certain task. And the first day, we're unloading, the next day, we're competing, and our robots obtaining a ranking compared to the other teams. And the day after that is alliance selections, where the best robots get picked based on their ranking. And of course, we're all trying to make it onto an alliance and represent Situate in the best way possible. And suits are really all branching off and doing their thing and whatever their interests are in. So whether that is scouting and building relationships with other teams and really being the face of Situate, or building and fixing things after a plate comes flying off in the middle of match, and we're scrambling to get that done. Or if it's sharing updates on our social media to connect with the families back home, and people like you, to really update you guys on what's going on. We're all there and we're contributing, and it's, it's long days, but they're fun.
Um, so when I look back on the hours and hours I spent, and all of us, I think, do, what we really learned was that the journey is more important than the destination. Always we had in mind that we're working for a war, we're working to get, you know, this moving. And when I look back, the growth as engineers, as students, as young adults, and as people and friends is tremendous. Um, we ha, it's a growth in maturity and in creative problem solving. No longer when something doesn't work, we stop, it's just, it's a mindset where, let's do it again, it's prototype, let's get back, let's get back online and try to figure out something new. Um, so, it's, it's really just both being able to ask for help when something isn't working, and also knowing when, when not to, when, you know, not to stop and when to keep working, knowing never to give up. Um, as well as learning how to, yeah, learn how to use a socket wrench and butt head screws to being, hey, saying, hey, I actually need help with this, it's not working for me, are both little and big lessons that we want to apply out throughout our student lives.
Now, as for the preseason, you might be asking, what does a, what does a preseason look like for robotics? To explain it, think of a sport, before they go to the game, obviously they're gonna need practice, and this is our practice. We're all first-year students here, and I can say it was very helpful to be going to preseason competitions, where ranking doesn't really matter, and it's all about learning and growth. Yes, we were thrown in the trenches, given a screwdriver, and told to fix things even though we didn't know how to. But at the end of the day, it was a tremendous help, to say the least, before the actual competition.
And aside from just the preseason events, we did a lot of work in preparation for our, um, major event. Um, all throughout September and October, November, um, the beginning months, we worked, um, tirelessly with, um, Mr. Sylvain Dumay. He has been a phenomenal help with mentoring us and teaching us, um, really what we need to know. Um, he's been supportive, and we really just can't thank him enough. But throughout the preseason, he, uh, put together a series of, um, mini courses for learning programming, computer-aided design, and fabrication that have been just instrumental and really inspiring, and we hope to continue that next year.
Yeah, now we move on to prototyping, so prototyping is like one of my favorite parts because, in my opinion, it's where you like learn the most. And even if you don't know what the engineering design process is, all you need to know is prototyping is taking your idea and then trying to make it, and then breaking it, and then fixing it, and keep doing that a million times over and over until you eventually have something that hopefully works. And it's branches from every single part of the entire robot, the entire team, from coding to building to literally anything.
I'd love to thank you for showing, this is what the robot looked like before I became all this, it was just parts and out of wood. It just broke again and again and again, and eventually became that. Like magic, not really.
Now, in order for us to stay sane during these really long days, of course, we're having fun in the lab. We're talking, we're eating, we're making inside jokes about things breaking and us fixing them. And we're staying late, we're putting the work in, and really, I can't remember a bad time I've had in that lab. I always wanna come back, even though it, the work might be tiring. So, yeah, we're having lots of fun there.
Yeah, just add on, I had never touched the Allen wrench in my life, and then Mr. Dumay was like, hey, you wanna help? I was like, okay. And, uh, I, after quite, quite a couple hours, um, possibly a few tears, but overall, it was great. Um, I built this part of, I built part of this on the robot, um, as a completely freshman, and it's something new. And it was, I was laughing all the time, and I had friends and people trusted around me who helped me. And it wasn't like they were telling me what to do, it was like they were helping me learn for myself, and learn to tell myself what to do based on my observations. I really liked.
Yeah, the lab is just a community, really, and every day is something new, and you always have just smiling faces and very difficult tasks, but smiling faces nonetheless to help you through them, and it's just, it's just a really great time every day.
There's some more long nights for you, that's, um, me in the first picture, I think it was about like 8:00 PM at this point, and we're ironing our bumpers. So, I'd imagine how that went.
Um, yeah, and so after all of this, all of this, you know, work and group work, and then we get to competitions, this is, this is the end goal. Uh, and we're gonna show, and this is, this was the end product of all our, of all our work, and we're really, really, really proud of it. Um, and so, the competitions is not only an arena where the robot's supposed to do certain tasks in order to gain points and competing against, uh, other robots from other parts of New England. It's also that, um, you, you win awards based on how efficient or how well your robot works, and also how your community, you know, reaches out and how you use your knowledge to help other people. Um, and so like, there I am, talking to one of the judges, and I think this was creativity or outreach. Um, and so you win awards based on how much you help the people around you, which I think is a really special part, but it's not just, oh, I'm sitting in a corner in the lab working on my own thing, I'm actively helping both younger students and building new generation, and I'm asking, you know, the pit, or the team right next to me, hey, how was your day? Um, can we, you know, we can, let's take a walk and be friends and share our ideas and creativity. And so that's really what competition is, you know, all the way from Vermont to, uh, Hangham, right next door. We're, it's a really good community of competitions.
Um, the first picture there, um, I'm there leaning over fixing my robot, that's a very memorable experience. So, during one of our matches, one of the plates on the robot came flying off and broke. And we really had to fix that before the next match, and we had about 10, 15-ish minutes. And let's just say we were running, we were, get the tools, let's get this done, let's fix this, and even as a first-year student, at that moment, I felt like kind of accomplished and proud that I could jump in and be on, in on the action and help fix it when times like that came.
And it's not just, um, when something goes wrong on the robot, but before every match, and there's like up to 70 matches at an event, um, we are going to be, uh, communicating with other teams, we're gonna be talking about strategy. We all built these robots, and how are we gonna use them, work together and work towards this common goal? And I think strategy, uh, is one of my favorite parts of being at a competition, cuz you get to see, what did your robot do that was different than ours? And how can we, uh, work together and use our two different robots to complete the same goal, and it's just a whole bunch of fun.
And even furthermore, branching off that, it's more than just the robot, it's about creating a common goal and being able to unite with people to actually try to achieve this, and maybe you're working with people from other towns that you've never really met, or you have differing ideas about what should go on with the robot. Should you add something, remove something, change something? It's about working through that, giving a brand-new opportunity every single time to improve yourself and your team.
Uh, yeah, so, this is a part where it got a little challenging for us, um, not everything goes as, as planned as life is. Um, and now this is after, uh, our, our last competition of the season, and we're, and now we're, I think, now we're watching, um, the last matches, and this is when, I think as a team, we needed each other most, because when something went wrong, we all, and we all, and we all had put the same amount of work in, and so we all understood, a little, it was a little bit heart, a little heartbreaking, but it was also a really, really fantastic lesson for all of us to learn. So this, I think, was a great criteria, um, you know, what a community we are that we, we're sitting in, we're smiling, and we've overcome something that we felt we would achieve, but we didn't, um, and I, I thought that was one of us best this season.
Um, here's just some more pictures, there's a team dinner we had, some fun in the lab.
It sounds like so much work, but like, we're laughing all the time.
Um, uh, here's us, uh, with another team in the middle, that's the Hangham team, just some more pictures at competitions. And I just wanted to reaffirm, community support, it's vital. We're always looking to build on to what I now consider like a second family, and outreach with the community, and continue with all of the support that we've been given. And here are some students who are graduating this year and where they are going.
Um, and furthermore, uh, the courses that we have at our, um, at our fingertips here at, uh, Situate, we, um, we have a lot of support with our knowledge base. Uh, I have been taking, uh, computer science courses with Ms. Halahan, which have been, um, very helpful in trying to, um, dissect the very complicated code that is in that monster. Uh, it is not fun, but it is really, really exciting to try and learn more, and, um, the courses that we have here, um, just really support that.
Yeah, I can add on to that too, as someone who takes calculus, uh, I really feel like I can tie together a lot of what's going on inside the lab to the classroom, and I also even wanted to mention at the bottom, you can see that DECA and marketing is also included as something that's related here, and preseason, we used to do these things called Marketing Mondays, where we'd meet on Monday and talk about marketing and outreach and grants and all of that. And I feel like I can confidently say that I believe I've learned even more from robotics about marketing and outreach and writing grants and promotion than I have even from DECA, which is oriented toward business. So it's very interesting how people can really explore their interests in this club.
Um, so if you know anyone who'd be willing to be part of our family and community, we're always looking for volunteers, um, always try, always trying to work that, that outreach, uh, so if you or anyone else would love to be, you know, part of this, we, we really, really welcome you. Um, and we need all the, all talent and, you know, help, and, and somebody to talk to even.
We don't bite.
Yeah, we don't bite. Um, yeah, well, well, give me some safety goggles. Good right. Okay.
Thank you guys so much for our support. If you wanna keep in touch with us, or right here, obviously, you guys can totally come talk to us, we're also available. We have websites, Instagrams, YouTube, you name it, we have it. Thank you guys so much for letting us speak and hearing our story, I'm so happy that we were able to do this, and, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if. And if you have any questions, we will take you to them.
Are you gonna say it, or does that fall?
Uh, well, we're trying not to give people hair, does she, does she?
Did, does. Yeah.
We, it's like, I'll send you a video, uh, not my.
Definitely, one on a board, it's one of the words for it, the international.
Um, we could.
Yes. So, um, part of the arena is, uh, you get points, imagine a coat hanger, that's about, that's exactly 50 feet tall. And there's a level over here called L four, and so our idea, which wanted to be a tip reward, was this built based on a mortar, was literally to just shoot it if I could get this thing out. And right on here, and that is actually six, seven points, considerable amount of points in the first part, and, uh, even more in the rest of the game. So, this, uh, most people place it and we decide to go. So.
And I just wanted to mention, if you'd like to see our robot in action and all the things this can do, you should definitely check out our Instagram, it's Situate F R C, there's a ton of cool videos up there. And it's gone pretty popular too, we got like 60,000 views on one of our videos, so.
For that shooter.
For the shooter, yeah, the shooter, the shooter really hit the goal, um, yes, we're very, very, very proud of it.
It's not functional at the moment.
Okay.
We're working on it.
Well, I was worrying about like, I can like, all right, I'm guessing the ball will shoot like, you know, into the tile.
No, so.
We were worried about not having enough time because they had so many beautiful things to say, uh, to showcase it, but we do have a lot of videos.
Yeah. Yeah. Look, so, um, to explain the arena, there's a net right here, and, uh, you're supposed to put the ball in the net any way you can. And so again, we like to shoot these things, that seemed to be our main theme this year. Um, I'm totally sure it's wild, it's pretty cool. Uh, so this, again, right, this goes up to the, here, maybe? And, uh, either places or shoots this ball into the net, and, uh, this lines up with one of eight coat hangers in a circle, and, uh, we shoot it up. Yeah. Is that it?
And not, where it answers the question.
Where it answers the question.
Uh, yeah, this is.
This is the out, the, this is called Algy, the ball, uh, not very many teams opted to build an Algy bot, most had arms that, that would hang these pieces of PVC, and so we, we stood out for a lot of reasons, for shooter, which is a bonus.
Creative, yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so this is amazing, I mean, I think we always look forward to one of the robotics. So, on the edge of our seats, so thank you. So you mentioned outreach to, you know, other folks, to eighteen teammates. Um, so I have the pleasure and wonderful curiosity of hanging out with a lot of young middle-school boys, driving them various places. And what's interesting is I hear them say how they love what you do, and some of them are very intimidated by what you do. And so, the question is, like, how do you talk to those folks, right? Like, they're worried about not being the, the best at engineering or the best at whatever, and so, can you talk to that a little bit?
I can definitely take this question, cuz I was there. So, last year, I'm so sorry, Ms. Halahan, she chased me down all of last year trying to get me to join, I didn't. I was terrified, meeting every single day after school until dark, is this a cult? And I can really say that we've kind of been trying to work on making it look less intimidating and really teaching people, cuz that's what it's all about. Honestly, it is scary being thrown in there, but the support systems that we have are real. And I, there was never a moment where I believed where like, if I couldn't do something, then we were, we were done for. There was always someone who was there to help me, to guide me, to support me. And we also have preseason teaching, which helps immensely, like at the preseason competitions as well. And Mr. Dumay was a soul, has been teaching, like, um, like many kids, we had so many new members this year who didn't know anything. We're all new, and we learned so, 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 so much, and it's like, it's, I feel like a new person after this year.
Yeah.
And it's really about going through that first year, learning everything, being new, yes, not doing some things quite as well, but jumping in on the action, and we've even been working on supports to kind of support the underclassmen. Next year, we're gonna do more of a buddy system, where an older, uh, like a senior or junior who knows what they're doing pairs up with one of the younger kids and kind of walks them through and explains every single thing that they do.
Yeah, that's amazing, cuz I do think, you know, as someone who's not an engineer, I think that idea of robotics is often, it feels like it's reserved for the, you know, the elite of the elite, um, well, I mean, you're fantastic, that's not saying, but I do think like making it accessible, right? And I almost imagine not that you have any more time because you're spending 12 hours in the lab, but, you know, those, those times when you go to a restaurant, you get that special table where you can watch the chef cooking, it would be, I don't know if you already do this? Like invite folks in, you know, you know, middle-schoolers or younger, you do already do that?
We're, we're working on adding.
Oh, cool, cuz I think it'd be great to like be able to see you have like a, I don't know, just be able to see you working and see all the laughter that you described, so.
That's one of the missions of First, really is to spread STEM education, and so, we're, we're supporting the Lego League team that's starting at my gates. We just hosted them in our lab, uh, last week.
Yeah, that was cool. I'd like to, I'd like to say like, you're, you're completely right, um, when I first walked into the lab, I felt like I didn't know what I was doing. I honestly felt, I walked in, oh, I know a little coding, and I felt, I walked over a little summer that I have before. And that's completely understandable, um, and I, and I realized that it was mainly because, I'm trying to put this into words. And I and I realized that it was mainly because, I'm trying to put this into words. Everyone is trying to make it seem like they know what they're doing because everyone really doesn't know what they're they're doing.
Yeah.
Uh which is a very common thing between ages that are twelve to eighteen.
And adults.
And.
Take it.
Go on, you can clearly make it.
We'll see, we'll see men though, probably.
This will happen over and over again.
Called the access.
Yeah.
And so what 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 came from that is the ability to say, I don't know.
Yeah.
And I think that was the most valuable lesson I learned and that we all learned was there's no embarrassment in in being in being intimidated and being the one who doesn't know everything and being the one that doesn't think I there's the um one of the guys and he he built this completely at home and he and this was the this was what he spent his time on, I hadn't done that. And that's not my fault, but I still felt a little bit ashamed that I didn't. And so what I what I took away from it was that's okay, you just need to push for it, you need to take initiative when you're feeling intimidated, you need to say, hey, I don't understand what you're doing, could you please explain? And and that's what I think with middle schoolers, they go and commit and that's what I took.
Thanks. Any other questions?
I got a similar question to Carrot, it was, can you guys answer it for the?
Can you, can I think people wanna see, maybe um come off the presentation, so that people listening, they wanna see.
Oh, see.
Stop sharing, so they can see the robot.
They wanna see some sharing.
Oh, see the robot.
Oh, yeah, oh.
Good. It's different on system.
On Zoom, they're sharing the screen, so.
There you go.
And now they can see it. Especially when you roll it in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right in the middle.
Someone wanted to hear, I think, to hear you answering all these questions, so eloquently and fastly.
There comes. Sorry.
Yeah.
Um oh, just you guys mostly answered the question, um and you, I did notice that you all mentioned that you were first years and you mentioned it again when you responded. Um you you mostly um mentioned this, but what was your goal when you joined this club? It seems like it it exceeded all of your expectations, I know you've already spent a little bit of time talking about it, but I think for any first year to try anything, but what were you really expecting to get out of this?
I think it comes down to a lot of how many different things we offer, so personally, I love coding, it's one of my favorite things in the world. So I went into this expecting, hey, you know, some extra coding, whatever, and that was what drew me in and what was beautiful about that was it allowed me to experience so many other things, I had no idea how to build a robot or what a robot would even do. But through my love of coding, I was able to open this new door and learn so many other things that I now know I love, like I didn't think I loved engineering, but now I know that building stuff and prototyping, engineering, design process, like I said earlier, it's such, it's just.
It sounds like it also became like a really social club as well, which I don't think was, I would assume wasn't really what your expectations were, maybe it was, maybe it wasn't, but it sounds like you guys spent a lot of time together and seemingly all got along, you know, as well as as well as everyone, and I know, you know, the dynamics can be difficult, but.
Honestly, I think it's impossible not to get along when you're staying in school till nine P M, putting pieces together on the floor.
Yeah.
And then again, it's impossible to get along.
So.
Um I'm Anne Marie Galvin, I wanted to add a couple of comments, always. But I'm also one of the people that was behind the beginning of this team um about five years ago and I mentor marketing with these fine folks and uh Marketing Mondays and uh Gavin, we're what am I, the fan fan club over there, several members of the fan club, Gavin Quinlan um serves on the on the five oh one C three booster board, so it's a big booster, well, a small organization, small but mighty organization fundraising for this team, so I wanna shout out um to Mr. Quinlan, uh but to add on to the comments about how you got kind of hooked in and how how we are reaching out and engaging younger kids and building the bench for the cyber sailors, there is this lady right here, like there's not, there's no better, more welcoming, I get, Carrie, my goodness, I'm robotics even. Ambassador for kids possibly in the building, I've had many wonderful experiences, as you know, with the fine educator since I went to public schools, but what Carrie Hallian has done with this team is off the charts. Making a home away from home, a very competitive team, insane college acceptances and scholarships, like every acceptance letter comes with like all this free money and my own student that graduated last year was also benefited from that, so it's an experience. The reason I'm a humanities person, as you know, I'm not a STEM expert, but the reason that I got behind creating this team way back when with um you know, past teachers and past principals and administrators was because it didn't exist in Situit and schools like Situit have teams like this. Well, we caught up and exceeded them, um and it's really all thanks to Carrie Hallian and and all, you know, everyone else saying yes when we ask and we say, we really need help now, we need a little more money now and people agreeing how valuable this is. Um but without a teacher in the building that's going to know, oh, you know, chase people that are good at coding and create these warm welcoming spaces and figure out overnight in Worcester when the rooms keep changing and it's not it's, you know, it's extraordinary the amount of work that's involved, um it's Mr. Dumey for sure, it's Mrs. Hallian um first and foremost, so I'm so grateful to you for creating this ama- amazing thing. Um and they talked a lot about the preseason and the competition season. Honestly, it's year round, I think we give her a few weeks off in August, we have a big, I'm not kidding, like the amount of texting that happens is not funny. It's 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 in a, it's a major, major lift and it's to our, to the good of Situit, really, it's a wonderful, it's not even extracurricular, it's co-curricular, it's life-changing, it's it is real life, actually, like real life engineering and um I'm so proud that we have it and it's so, I mean, it's so impressive, so um thanks for your continued support. Gavin for doing those DECA things. And space and more teachers and help, like there's there's the amount more that we could do is, you know, I don't wanna scare her away if I haven't yet. Um but that, you know, the fact that we're adding now at the middle school is wonderful, that started with a sort of a pilot this year with some community um funding from the Rotary Club, there's it's a like a junior league, it's a tabletop kits, baby versions of this um that Mount Mulder and one of the new engineering teachers are leading up during school as an I B C right now to sort of recruit people and then next fall, they'll begin their little mini competition, so uh lots of the same language and lingo and uh it'll be robots for everybody soon.
I guess that kind of leads into my question, was what do you need, what are what are you in need of?
Space.
I, that was what I was thinking.
That was a, yeah, that's, we have thirty students and my classroom is larger than the lab.
Yeah. Things, yeah. Yeah.
We have about six hundred square feet in the lab with, it's full of tools, so it's really impossible to talk,
Yeah.
to have conversations about coding when the waves are running uh and the saw is running. And the gal, you know, sounds, saw, uh so, yeah, we end up floating out into the hallway and sitting on the floor and working, but that's hard because then you then you have to split the adults that are in the room. And that's not, that's not really helpful, because as you know, we have sub teams all working and all being advised by this group of adults, we have two major uh adult mentors who come and help us all the time, uh Riley Heine and Kevin Jean have, were there all the time. So it's any kind of space, I know that there's no necessary, no space necessarily in the high school, but you know what's going on in the whole district in terms of space and maybe some planning can happen in the next few years for shuffling, you know, certain
Yeah.
certain spaces.
Real and true.
That's right. Well, we we obviously know how to make do with what we have at any given moment, be via, be it finances or space, but
Yeah.
it's it's our highest need.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good to know.
Um I was just gonna add, thank you for, um this was awesome, as it always is, um I'm so happy to hear about the middle school pilot too, I think that's fantastic and I think that will start to build that, you know, pipeline, I also um would love to see an opportunity for some students to talk to elementary school kids too and show them this and just say like, hey, if you're really interested in math and science, just get them a vision for what that might look like as they get older, I think that earlier um we can get into kids' heads that this is possible in the not-too-distant future. I feel like that's just so motivating and so inspirational for them and for their teachers, so I would love to at some point see how we can make space for for that too. Just hearing from you guys, it, you know, that doesn't even have to involve the adults, you know, just bring the kids in, bring the robot in and show the kids how it works, like I think that would just be really cool.
Well, also just to your point earlier that you were a coder but didn't connect it to engineering, so even for the kids,
Yeah, that's true.
we see lots of builders who are interested in three D printers and stuff, but they haven't connected it to the math and science, so that what a
True. That's right.
entry point, right, to moti- right, motivation?
Yeah.
So it could be both ways, right?
Definitely.
Which is kind of cool.
Yeah, we're.
Ruth Yassine knows me as grandmother, and again, this has been an astounding experience, my four kids who went through the Situit schools, we built to have a program like this, it's just really amazing and blew our minds away. Um looking at my, I have another son who's in Glastonbury, Connecticut, the first program, which of course is what we, you know, kind of guides us, they have a K through twelve, you know, high school encouraging this kind of training throughout, they have a wing for their first, for their uh robotics program. And they have things where, again, they get, you end up with other moving on down to middle school and even elementary school, you know, mentors who then help guide volunteers. So my young um kindergarten and first grade and third grade granddaughters are doing first type material, now they don't they don't compete, but it starts with Lego things, et cetera, and they do have this materials available, but it does take also further investment by the school district.
Yeah.
And space serving is part of that.
That's great to hear, thank you.
Thanks.
But we have all so much, we have one more competition, if you wanna follow along on social media.
Yeah. And thank you.
We have one more competition, if you wanna follow along on social media.
You do.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Good job, guys.
It was like computer program.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is like.
So.
Times they have.
Oh man.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
We would, we would.
Alright. Wrapping up, we got an approval of minutes from NACIS.
Right.
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the May fifth twenty twenty five minutes as presented.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, uh warrants?
We have three this evening to catch up, um from May first two thousand twenty five, two hundred and forty-five thousand seven hundred and two dollars and thirty-five cents, um one hundred and thirty-three thousand of which is from our budget. On May eighth, two thousand twenty five, four hundred and fifty-one thousand forty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. And on May fifteenth, twenty twenty five, one hundred and six thousand eighty-four dollars and forty-eight cents. And that catches us up to.
Okay, um correspondences or any other business or future agenda items?
Future agenda item is the policy subcommittee to be on the next agenda to discuss field trip policy and general
Right. Yeah.
um a process for reviewing.
Where are we gonna plan this tonight?
Plan it.
Pol- policies going forward.
Oh, they agree with it.
A process for reviewing policies going forward as a committee.
Okay. Yeah, so you're just looking to sort of streamline that?
Yes.
Set up.
Involve and expand it.
All policy, all policies.
Expand and streamline.
I love it, I think it's great.
Yes, so on, maybe we talk one next to another on that, I I believe that we subscribe to something at mass relative to policies.
You need to think if you if you remember.
And I don't, I don't know, I don't really know what it is that they provide to us.
Remember it went down?
That that.
Yes.
They provide the platform.
Yes.
Oh, that our policies go on.
They host it, they host it, yeah, yes.
Okay, I just, I didn't, I didn't know what it was.
And I think when we initially bought in, we bought in to sort of their like.
They'll either like what it don't.
Their generic policies.
Yes, and then over time, we have adjusted some of them.
Okay.
And added it.
Okay, I just, I.
I feel like it's gone both ways, where there were older policies that we aligned with what they have and then there are some that we
Yeah.
Magravir.
Yeah.
Yeah.
took to a more specific Situit model of, so it's a little get a little take.
Yeah, yeah.
They have like a template, sometimes when there's a big policy coming out, they're like, here, here, here's a template.
Right. Yeah.
Right, but what if our policy is already unique to us, like what do we do with that info?
Then it's okay.
We review it and say, do we need to do this or not?
Review it, yeah.
Okay.
Do we need to change anything?
Okay.
I like that they have that.
You're still, you're still.
But our new process offers an extended role for the whole committee.
Yes.
Lovely. Well, see.
Yes.
Oh, get excited, people.
Um I'm just gonna add that we pay them to host our Situit policies, so like when you click on school committee and the policies, it goes to the M A S C site, all those policies are ours. Whenever policy subcommittee votes to change it, like with the competency, competency determination policy, we then send it to Anne Maria M A S C, she updates the Situit version of it, um so they're all Situit policies, they're just hosted there and then other districts pay in the same way, but it's still um their own policies hosted on M A S C's site, so we are getting, they are doing a service for us. And um I think we, it's the most streamlined way for us to keep our policies updated, so that's what they they do.
And that's the whole page of policy services.
It seems like most districts use it, whether it's stock other districts, it's like it's the same format and everyone tells.
Yeah, yeah.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I I never knew, I didn't know if we had something to do with them and we pay them for somebody, I wasn't sure if it was that we just accept their policies, but I know that we don't, we have our own policies.
No.
So I just didn't know how we interacted with that stuff.
Yeah. Like Jan said, they do put out those.
Yeah, they'll put a a bonus in.
They review them, yeah, they they do. This is different.
Thank you.
So that's for next time.
Yeah, okay, great, um and there's nothing else, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at seven forty-six.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.